Alright, follow the meeting order. Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I see a flag back there or one up here, so wherever you need to go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, next up we have reading of the mission statement and strategic priority number one. Gina, please.
The mission, we will empower a community of lifelong learners who strive for personal excellence through meaningful relationships and real world authentic learning experiences. And strategic priority number one, increase student opportunities that integrate real world focus and application based learning to ensure all students are college, career, and life ready.
Thank you. Um, next conflict of interest declaration. Now is the time to declare if any of the agenda items pose a personal conflict of interest. Does anybody have any to declare? Okay. Approval of agenda, anything modified or changed? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion by Emily, their second. Second by Tim, all those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Let's carry on this. Next up is greet visitors communications from the public. Members of the community are invited to make comments about items of interest or concern. We'd like to remind you that this is a board meeting in the public and not a public meeting. By law, members cannot address concerns during this portion of the meeting. We ask you remember Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, their job performance, or individual students. Is there anybody here to speak in public comment? Just a lot of bodies with kids evidently for vertical whiteboards. I like it, I like it, alright. Bear with us, just are we going there now first?
Yep, we'll get you there.
Information only strategic plan monitoring report.
Yeah, so the reason we're at the middle school is for the board to see the vertical whiteboards. It's come from our work that Tamra's been working with our math teachers that started the middle school around building thinking classrooms. I got the opportunity to step in last year and when we talk about how do we help our kids develop profile of graduate skills at a younger grade level? I think you'll see that at the vertical whiteboard that they that they're demonstrating those skills and learning math. So kudos to, I want to shout out to Tamra and the and the middle school math teachers. Started out of a personalized PD program. She support over two years and now we have this going on across the district. You walk into high school algebra class, you'll see them all the way down to kindergartners. So a really great program, I'm excited and thankful for all the families. You need to share Tam before we move up there? Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
I'm Tamara Payne, I am the K-12 math instructional coach for the district. And a few years ago, several of my professional groups that I'm a part of started mentioning this book by Peter Liligal called Building Thinking Classrooms. So I started digging in and learning more about it. And then we were really fortunate in Iowa because Peter Liligal, the author, visited our ICTM conference in the fall of 2022. And I would have was fortunate enough to be able to go and was overwhelmed by the experience. They had us as teachers act as students. And so when I started reading the book, it talks a lot about mimicking. And if you think back to your days of being a student in a classroom, it's really the teacher stands at the board, shows you what to do, gives you a problem. You work through it together and then you get a bunch of practice problems and repeat, right? Well, what we're finding is kids don't retain information when they're just following steps that a teacher tells them to do. So instead, we kind of flip the script. Let's give them a problem, see what they know, see how they can use what they do know to figure out what they don't know. The kids love it, the teachers love it, we're seeing so much engagement. As I said, I'm in all of the buildings. The high school was probably the most overwhelming for me to see the high school kids. Like I went from 50% of a class being engaged to I would even be, I think I could say 98% of the classroom being engaged. I guess it just it really brings students into the work. As Justin said, our profile of a graduate, there's a lot of collaborating going on. It's self driven, self starting. So I just, I can't wait for you to see the kids. Obviously, this is a little bit. Um, it's not the regular school day, it's not the regular classroom. So there might be a little bit of difference there, but I think you'll get the idea of what it looks like. And hopefully you'll go home in time to work with kids about it and see what they think about the question. So.
Are we ready?
We're ready, let's go up, we're gonna go up the stairs and it's.
Emily ran to the restroom. I didn't take my phone with me up there, I felt like. Okay, I was gonna take pictures. Oh. I usually send them to Kendra whenever we're at things like this. Okay, we have everybody? Perfect, next up, we're gonna do a little switching. We were gonna do building level reports, but FFA recap is ready to go. So FFA students, you're up.
Thank you. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for letting us take a little time out of the agenda. My name's Carly Christensen, I'm currently serving as Winner Set FA president. We're here to share a little bit about national convention. And with me is Emma Bradley, I'm currently serving as the Winner Set FA vice president.
You're at Lawrence, I'm serving as this year's.
Perfect, so we're just gonna walk you through some things of the convention that we attended a couple of weeks ago. We went to Indianapolis, Indiana, that's where our national FA convention is held. We took eight members to Indianapolis for the convention. We left on Tuesday, October 22nd, and then we were there until Saturday, the 26th. We covered a total of 1,237 miles, to be exact. We joined the sea of blue jackets that takes on Indiana. It's pretty incredible, anywhere you go downtown Indianapolis, you just see blue jackets flooded down every single suite, every single street and every restaurant that you can possibly see. So that was super fun to join this year. We, in order to get there, we had to fundraise, of course, so we weren't just able to attend. We, there's a lot of qualifications and we have to meet a lot of areas of eligibility in order to attend the convention. So we fundraised enough sponsor money, about $3,000, to be exact, in order to cover meals, accommodations, we didn't have to carry a lot of money with us to the trip. We fundraised ahead of time, that way the chapter can sponsor it while we're out there. And that's not on us as members, we can just enjoy the convention. That's a big part about getting there is kids have to fundraise and make sure that they get enough money to attend the convention.
On Tuesday, October 22nd, members toured an alpaca farm in West Branch, Iowa, Tanner's Orchard in Spirit, Illinois, and Hummel's Livestock in Cabaret, Illinois. Hummel's Livestock was really interesting. They actually started their company with exotic cats. Apparently they were each 30,000 a cat. Yeah, and 400 goat herd. And they had three exotic Argentinean heifers that they kept. And they're gonna sell that for shows. It's really cool, their entire thing is about being different. It was really awesome, being someone that likes cattle, I thoroughly enjoyed it. Alpaca, alpaca farm, it was really interesting. We, they have a lot of ways to die, which is extremely.
Very fragile animals.
Very fragile, like as fragile as a baby, like supposedly, very weird. And if you take it to the mill and you have a name for it, the fur, you just ask for that animal's name and it's the same fur and it'll keep producing it. So you want a fur and silks name, they'll get silk, silk cat, silk structure, it's pretty.
So we're able to break up our travel day with some tours and that makes it a lot easier to travel that many miles. So when we got there, the theme this year was to engage at national convention. I think last year it was evolved, they always have some sort of a verb that applies to everyone that attends the convention. And that's what the keynote speakers they use to address. They say, we want you to engage this year at the national convention. So on Wednesday, October 23rd, we arrived for our first day at the convention. We participated in workshops, we watched contests, we attended general sessions in Lucas Oil Stadium. We heard keynote speakers, one of the big one, I think his name was Kevin Wurzer. I believe he was just a super energetic guy that made us all super excited for the rest of the convention. And yeah, we also had a major, I think this is, this is the second day, but we had a major keynote of Temple Brandon's, that was super interesting. We learned about her in ag class, that was super cool to bridge that gap in hearing her talk.
Tours continued on Thursday, October 24th. Members broke up convention days with more tours at Ozark Fisheries, Danny Breeze Creamery, and Heartland Growers Greenhouse. Heartland Growers was really cool, they had a bunch of point setters, if you can kind of see it. But there was tons of point setters that people can buy and order and I think like crates is what they did. That was really interesting. And this, this is a bunch of crawfish that I had to sacrifice my hand for. That was fun, and it had snapping turtles, catfish, it was really interesting to see that. Tons of exotic koi, Japanese koi fish, I think. That was really fun. And then the Danny Breeze Creamery, they blew up in 2020 because of COVID. No one could buy in stores in Indiana, so they had to go to local. So they just exploded with a bunch of customers, that was really interesting. We got to go around at the dairy calves if you wanted.
So for our second day at national convention, we came back to Lucas Oil on Friday. We returned to the convention to continue to partake in workshops, attend sessions, and watch some other contests. We have the opportunity to visit the college expo and shopping center. So normally when we would get to the convention, we kind of have the day to ourselves. If we wanted to go talk to some colleges, we wanted to go watch the contest nationally. Or we would gather in Lucas Oil Stadium and fill over half of the stadium with blue jackets to watch the general sessions. So those days were super nice to take what you want to do and what you want to pursue. And you could benefit from that, or you could go a different route from others. So that was a great networking opportunity to be able to split up. On the last day, Saturday, we came back for one final time to witness one of our own received his American degree, Connor Paycheck. He graduated in 2023 and he received the honor that only half a percent of FFA members achieve. It was a super great honor that we were super excited for him to receive this year. He had to track both of his supervised agricultural experiences with heavily involved SAE records in order to be eligible for this degree. So we're excited for Connor and his receiving of that degree.
So she kind of already talked about the SAE records, but the program that we use to record these records is called AET. So FFA members use AET to check our hours, our skills that were learned, paychecks, other FFA information in order to be eligible for state degrees and the American degree. So there's certain requirements for each degree. And we hold it as a chapter level, but then it gets really detrimental as a state level and even more so as a national level. So we really push for keeping it updated about your book because that's how we become successful in those degrees.
It's very parallel to profile of a graduate. So we really like to see the similarities between what we're already tracking and then what we can expand on with both and vice versa.
So then going into our nationals, we had Carly Christensen that was able to compete there, which was extremely difficult. So we start at the very bottom, so the sub district level. So Carly represented the Winner Set FA and Iowa FFA as a whole, and then employment skills LDE. And she placed fifth in the contest out of 47 competitive state representatives. And that's been the first time that we've ever placed at nationals, which is extremely hard. Crazy to think about. So in order to reach nationals, Carly had to compete at the sub districts level and then advance as a gold. Then she led, she had to compete at the district level, again, advancing as a gold. And finally, she advanced to the top 12 in state and won the state convention at the job interview LD, also as a gold. She had to complete and submit multiple times a professional resume, cover letter, job, job application, and job description. So from the state level to the national level, we kind of have to rework some things that we send in. So they meet the requirements. Over there is her resume and cover letter. And then this was state convention and national. And then she went through prelim, the preliminary round and that consisted of virtual interview and email correspondence. So that was the first part of that. And then the face to face interview and handwritten correspondence. And then the semifinals round consisted of face to face interview. So for the very first part, they have the 47 states, they narrowed it down to 12. She ended up in that 12, from there, that 12, they narrowed down to eight. From eight, they narrowed down to four, and then she ended up in fifth. So, yeah. The finals consisted of the networking lunch on and the industry professionals and CEOs and the mock job interview over the.
I will say I'm super blessed to have that opportunity, but that was quite scary. To sit and try to eat a meal with agcareers.com as a CEO sitting right next to me, trying to ask me questions. But I'm super grateful that I had that opportunity and that was the most mock experience I could get before I would actually be in that place in life. So I was so excited to be in that contest and so excited to advance that far and and just so grateful for that honor to represent Winner Set.
Networking opportunities at convention, members had a generous opportunity to network. College and career expo workshops, service project checklist, members met fellow blue jacket wearers from all the states. I met someone from Alaska, they were actually originally in Ames. So they randomly tapped me on the shoulder, came up to me. Apparently they were famous, graduated, go to Alaska for cod, salmon fishing. That's interesting. The college expo was really interesting, I know I talked to Iowa State and SDSU about ag, ag based majors. The career expo was really interesting and I went to an air force training simulator. That was really seasicking. Workshop's really interesting, I know that most of everyone on the team went to entrepreneurship, which was really cool for me because I kind of want to start my own business. That was really helpful for some ideas. Service projects, we learned a bunch of new things that we can do as a chapter for the rest of the community. And it was just a really cool experience to meet people from everywhere. It was really, really awesome.
The members were challenged to complete a checklist and one of those things was taking a picture or having a autograph of every 50 states. So that was, people were trying to cram on Friday, trying to find pictures of Alaska and Hawaii. And there's just so few members that it was hard, but it was so cool to meet people from other areas of our nation. Are there any questions that we can answer about the convention or anything that we partake in? Yeah.
The Connor who got that degree, what was he, how did he get that? Like what was the kind of, what was he doing, I guess?
Yeah, so he first had to get the state degree, that just our Iowa degree. And with that, that AET that we mentioned, we have to track our skills, our hours put into our supervised agricultural experience. So for me, mine is performance horses and then my job as well. So then I believe for Connor, he showed pigs, so that was his main SAE. And then he had another one for his work. So he tracked every single skill and every single hour and every single paycheck that he put into every single one of those weeks that he spent with any of those activities. So from seventh grade all the way to senior year, he tracked paycheck show pigs was his SAE. And then with that, if you complete all that and you meet the eligibility requirements, then you can receive your state degree. If you want to go on, which only half a percent of FFA members do, then you can receive your American degree from those hours as well with some more stipulations.
So kind of just to go in that a little bit more, just so you know, like how many hours you really have to get. It's a lot of work, like extremely difficult. I know at the state level, you have to have 2,000 hours. So just think about how long you are in the barn every single day. Or for me, it's the barn, but for other people, it's looks a little bit different, like your job. And then at the national level, that's where it gets harder because you do have to make $10,000 or you could get so many different hours, which I think it doubles. So it just becomes a little harder and challenging because you get that as a sophomore in college. So you have to still be involved in the ag industry, so that's kind of where it gets hard.
He has to still be involved with the chapter even for those two years that he's been out of high school. So he might be totally done with Winnerset High School, but unfortunately he still has to come back and assist as an alumni member with FFA as much as maybe he didn't love that, that was part of that requirement. So, yeah.
How many, excuse me, how many students do we have currently in FFA in our school district?
We're still updating our roster because we still have some members paying dues, but I think we're over 65 now. So over 65 with six officers, yep.
Thank you.
Freshman through senior. It starts seventh grade. Yep, yes, seventh grade.
No questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Congrats, yeah.
It was awesome.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks for being here, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Plug those into eight.
Presentation. Alright, super tiny girls, we'll go back for building level reports.
Yep, load a couple, Mr. Sussman and Mrs. Plant, I haven't seen them today, I think I linked those in. I don't have them. Hope I didn't put them in the wrong month.
I can start next month.
I hope I didn't put them in the wrong month, so I jumped in today and put them on, I hope I didn't put them in the wrong month. But I'll let them kind of give an overview of that and I'll try and find those too.
Starwood Elementary? Yep, alright.
So under huge priority one, you know, looking for real word focuses for people. One of the things to go through for an opportunity or problem that it helps solve. First grade this, right now decided that kids needed hats and mittens. And then get hats and mittens, you have to have some money. So they have been designing and drawing posters, making posters, they've been selling for about two bucks a piece. Just to make some money, get some hats and mittens for kids that need them. So finding work, real work problems, solving. Priority two, 21st century skills and some other cool stuff. Mrs. Sussman has come up with a second, third grade glow gallery in one of our rooms. She's put black paper on all of it, put up art. So next Tuesday between 4:30 and 6:30, there will be a glow art walk at the elementary. Really kind of cool, want to stop by in this state for BTO being afterward, that's really cool. Next one, expand opportunities, number three, for developing self worth in connection with others. We started using Beanstack, a web tracking place for reading. And our first goal was 50,000 minutes, when we blew past that, we're up to 150,000 minutes. Schoolwide reading right now, probably shooting close to 500,000 by the end of that year. So each 50,000 minutes, we do some fun swaths and I know the weather change, all topsickle this week. Bottom before like turn 50. We'll have us this week kind of celebrating all the reading we're doing at the elementary. Strategic priority number four. PLC times, we took one time last week just to go around and go to other classrooms. Spending time in other classroom, learning what other teachers are doing. Leaving a positive comment for, for the classroom teacher. Do some learning that way. And what we're doing at the elementary.
Thank you, sir. Truly.
Well, you got to see most of my report upstairs, so I won't go over that. That really falls in that strategic priority number one, authentic learning experiences. Those vertical whiteboards are just part of that environment, so. And for 21st century learning skills and opportunities, we have all three grade levels have big projects kind of coming to a culminating end the week that we get out for Thanksgiving. So our fourth grade, it'll be our third annual balloon parade. So the morphology parade, students are doing word studies and then they build balloons to go with their word. So that is happening the weeks that we get out, 20, 21st. Fifth grade put a new project on the docket this year where they have done a state fair event. Children have been researching and studying states. And we'll have presentations on that, similar to our wax museum kind of thing, but we were wanting some social studies, geography, focus in that. And then sixth grade, and you've heard me talk about it, I think every month because it's been going on for the last few weeks, is our community recipe unit will be wrapping up that week. And that one has been really interesting because the project is embedded in their day to day lessons. With the ratios and learning ratios and then writing blogs and doing all of the things with recipes. So you're invited to come, that will be, there'll be a project Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of that week. Really focusing in on student competence with public speaking, teamwork, and those other essential skills that they need when it comes to profile of a graduate, which takes me into three and four. So CKH is really just become part of what we do here at middle school. I think you could walk into just about any classroom and you'll see pieces of it. So we will be applying for national showcase school in January again. Mid-year survey, for those who have children in this building, is now open. So we're gonna start sending that out to parents as well in getting staff doing the survey so that we can use that data to tell our story. I included in my report our implementation data for you. We learned some things as we did that this time, which meant we missed some of our reading, like capturing that data, and we missed our launch because I didn't schedule it incorrectly, so we weren't in the classrooms those times. We know that it's happening, it just wasn't reflected there. And then the last one I gave you is our memorable moment survey data that really goes with the strategic floor with building strong relationships. We are starting to see the student responses when we ask them, what has been your memorable moment in the last 30 days in school? This time, when I gave you the data, it's broken down by grade level. The top thing for fourth grade was science projects and our hands on learning. As well, in fifth grade, it also came down to band and choir experiences. We listed it as their top five. Sixth grade, their creative projects and the creative writing and their baking recipes and that. So we're just getting in their coding, if you got to see that story on Facebook as well, their technology. So we're starting to see it shift to these academic tasks are really what's creating memorable moments for kids. We're still doing the staff cares about, you know, we're connecting with kids because it's also reflected in their answers. But so that's exciting to see that we're shifting it a little bit earlier than we did last year. It was spring semester when we saw more classroom when the kids were pointing to classroom activities. So to be starting second quarter and really having the kids talk about the learning. And then I just gave you the dates at the end of the things that are coming up. Any question?
Any questions? Thank you.
They're linked in the right meeting, you know.
Found them.
I did have them in December, so just click the top one and you're like, yeah. Sorry, Mr. Sussman.
Sure. We'll start with strategic priority one, the idea of increasing opportunities and a greater level of focus. Get your basic learning to ensure that all students are college and career and life ready. On Thursday, October 24th, we executed our career day snapshot. Our seventh graders got to engage with 10 different local employers, it's purely a core exploration. The employers represented a wide variety of career pathways. Thank you, Rose, Mrs. Alexander, they presented to our seventh graders. Uh thank you, Rose, Mrs. Alexander, they presented to our seventh graders, talked about education. Like sometimes when we are talking to kids about careers, we, for some reason, we leave out education and, you know, push our our kids into that. Our eighth graders got to meet with six different local employers and their presentations were all focused on how they leverage. Uh profile of graduate skills in their day-to-day operations. I thought that was was really good, got kids um you know, seeing the connection between the skills that we're teaching. And people in the community who are using their own careers. I gotta give a shout out to Mr. St. John, he came and spoke on effective communication. Stuff was was real good. The next step in this journey is beginning our employer visits. So on uh November twenty-first, we're gonna have uh about two hundred kids get to rotate through the Madison County Hospital. And they're that diverse career paths at the hospital, so it's not just doctors and nurses, but there's a lot of different people that uh make that uh show run. And so that's that's the goal for at the junior high is to expose these kids, these uh careers, get them thinking, plant some seeds. Generate some interest, so we're excited about the twenty-first and getting our first rear uh employer visit uh underway. Um switching to strategic party two, integrating twenty-first century learning skills and student opportunities. Um we are knee-deep in planning our authentic learning showcase, which will take place Tuesday, March fourth during the night of conferences. We are still planning this, um myself, my building leadership team are created a basic framework structure format for the night. Um and we are bringing that to our staff on Wednesday, we're gonna go through something called a fine-tuning protocol. And it really serves two purposes. One is to give staff more input um into the design of this of the showcase uh through this protocol. And that is like a structured feedback process. Um where they listen to what we're presenting, they give I like statements, what they like about it. Do I wonder statements where they kinda raise concerns through some questioning. And then they have like they have an opportunity to get suggestions. So that's to give them input in the building of the showcase. And on the flip side of that and how it ties into twenty-first century skills. Is this is really applicable to a uh in the classroom, we're doing a P B L experience with students. One of the essential design elements is this idea of critique and revision. Where kids are giving each other meaningful feedback that can be applied to improve their product. And that can be really tough to do um as adults. Without personalizing it, without just going surface level and being afraid to offend someone or getting offended by your work being challenged. So the goal is during this P D is for teachers to A, give input on our showcase, but B, have a tool they can bring back to their classroom. Um that'll give kids a structured uh approach to giving each other feedback, which is a, I think is a critical twenty-first century skill. To be able to learn from each other, give feedback and then apply that to improve. What you would think is a finished product, but could be improved through peers and back, so. That's strategic priority two, um number three, expanding self uh worth and connection to others. Gonna go back to this core goal for the year, which is to be the best junior coming Iowa. Uh we believe that we can get kids to buy into this idea, be a part of and a contributor to best junior high in Iowa. They're gonna develop connections to each other and develop self-worth. I shared some data with you guys, uh what we measure to be quote-unquote the best junior high in Iowa. Is we want ninety percent of our students, ninety percent plus for students to be present, ninety percent or plus of days in the term. Ninety percent plus of our students earning a C minus or above in all classes, ninety percent plus uh receiving between two, zero and two behavior referrals. And then earning a collective three thousand difference maker dollars per term. Um we didn't quite hit it, but we did, we did pretty well. High overview, um the C minus and above in all classes was where we struggled. We had eighty percent of our kids get a C minus or above in all classes, which I believe that can improve. Um our attendance was great, we had ninety-two percent of our kids present, um ninety percent or plus uh of the time. And our behavior, we're right there, we had about eighty-nine-ish percent of kids earning between zero to two uh behavior referrals. So really, it's that uh classroom grade piece that we uh consider both. Also going on that self-worth and connections, we believe service uh to the community is a great way for kids to develop uh self-worth. By giving back to others, um and also great way to develop connections through service. And so on the twenty-first um in the morning, prior to our employer visits the hospital. Uh we're gonna take a good, our entire school out to the historical complex and we're gonna do some uh fall cleanup for them. So we're gonna break up uh the leaves and clean up that space. Um and I think that also exemplifies this idea of being the best junior high in Iowa. We can, the data is important, that drives decisions and helps us figure out what what we can improve. But it's these things like an employer visit and a community service project, which I believe uh you're not gonna get every junior high in Iowa. And it's an experience that kids can walk away from, like, yep, that's that's something special, we're part of something different, so. Strategic priority four, dealing strong relationships with students, staff and community. We had uh parent-teacher conferences last week. Tuesday night, uh we shut down conferences for about half an hour, had a fall festival. Uh which is, it's purely an intentional relationship-building activity where we prioritize connecting with families. And so we had meat and cheese tray, we had hot chocolate, smores and caramel apples. Made a decent turnout, um really just opportunity for uh families to be in a uh low-stakes environment. It's very relaxed, connect with each other, so um that was, that was great to see.
Your question, Josh.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, Cam, what we got?
Seventh grade basketball.
So yeah, no two, no two priorities here, uh just really quick. It's still, still working on our college career life rate stuff, uh we had instruction rounds, October fourteen, uh we went and collected data in our classrooms. Good experience, the feedback I got from the administrator driven out to good practice. Um sounds like we might do one at middle school, possibly elementary, maybe that day uh in December. Um but just an opportunity for other other leaders in our district to come look in our classroom and see what it is. So we're just collecting data around tasks we're asking kids to do, it's not evaluative, we're not judging teachers. We're just trying to get a snapshot of what are our kids doing in the classroom that day, what are we asking them to do? Um authentic learning tasks, I think at the FFA chapter up there, doing that. That that's the stuff that we need our kids doing and we're encouraging our kids to do, is go and have those experiences. Because those are the authentic learning strips, so sometimes we try to recreate a classroom and it's tough. It it doesn't feel real world when you do a mock interview with Mr. Smith and Pedro. Uh it's a good first step, but going on and doing this, so. Right now, our juniors are doing their job shadows, so a lot of them are leaving, going to different, different um employers. You wanna have the data, be excused, uh them away from school because we want them to see this before they go to college. And I wouldn't say waste money on a degree that they're not gonna use, but right, I want them to have a pretty good idea when they go in college. So that that's a lot of their authentic learning is looking like right now. The example, that's our shed project, um that our construction class did. Oh, so this is great, like getting them to learn how to do a a building project. You can't just, you can't just build stuff, right? Uh how do I order the the materials? We we use breeds, how do I order it? And then you have to pick it up, I mean, all these things, right? Your craftsmanship, quality, how do I transport something? Do I meet with the customer, but actually you're the customer? You know, or do I just create, you know, one size fits all shelves and we just put them up, so those are the type of activities that we're trying to promote. Uh the twenty-first century learning skills, student opportunities, again, we're we're connecting them with colleges, we've got a college trip to Simpson tomorrow. We've got D Mac, um criminal justice trip, December three. Uh where kids are signing up, continuing to take these trips, give them exposure to campuses. Uh we are, we're tackling this point first learning uh in our grade level meetings, so every Wednesday we have grade level meetings. Um throughout the month, we tackle one of Cubby's seven habits of effective teens uh every month. And we go through that, what does that mean for you? Um this month, uh it's putting first things first, so learning to prioritize time, I'm gonna plan, I'm gonna organize, right? Uh and then we take different information that's essential for grade levels, so with seniors. We start talking about fast, when you looked at the scholarship, like you walked them through that, you know how to. These certain schools have a period where it doesn't cost you to enroll in their school. That's when you should be in, you know, submitting your application. We start talking about juniors, about work-based learning the next year, M L C, you know, college, military or career readiness. What does that look like for you and how do we connect you with those opportunities? Freshmen, sometimes, I'm gonna be honest with you, is driving in a parking lot. How to park your vehicle with two lines, right? Um so everything is tailored to them. Uh strategic priority three, that connection, developing self-worth. Um you know, we did this cellphone conversation, we shared that data with Mr. Bro, Mr. Bro said that, maybe kind of we shared it yet or not, but. Um just just getting input from students, what does this look like, what are the challenges of that, uh voice and choice of that process? Uh and then we've got connections to all states, so music festival, November twenty-one through twenty-three. Three instrumental soloists, we've got one vocal soloist. That'll be performing down in Ames uh during that weekend, which is awesome. We've got winter sports starting, I gave you guys the numbers, the girls wrestling, twenty, we got twenty students. All of that, I think those numbers are gonna continue to go up, uh which is an awesome thing. Our boys wrestling team, thirty-four right now, girls basketball, twenty-one, boys basketball, twenty-nine. We got four boys that are gonna head to Indianola and participate in swimming. Which fantastic, thirteen, um people are using wrestling cheer, fifteen are using basketball cheer. Uh but what I love that our student council has done this year is they have put what our dress days are, we put them on posters, we put them in high-visibility areas. Encouraging kids to dress up. Prior to this year, it was like Snapchat, Instagram, hey, tonight's construction, right? And and not every kid knew, not everybody was aware, put that stuff in the cafeteria and put it in the hallways. If you wanna be a part of this, be a part of this, um and and that was a cool thing to see. Number four, the authentic relationships, give you guys a heads up, we've got self-care day on Wednesday. You do two forty-five minute sessions at the end of the day, teaching kids how to have a positive stress relief activity. That they can do to help regulate themselves. And our goal in this is, grateful, number one, they learn how to self-regulate in a positive way. They don't turn to destructive behaviors, number two, they might learn something new, right? Succulent painting, might be arts and crafts day in their own. And then number three, it's a peer-to-peer interaction. We put our phones down and we do something with each other, learn how to how to talk, we learn how to, one of the best ones is targeting. Like something I grew up doing and some of our kids are doing, if they would just learn how to even do play parts. You can talk, you can play parts, they interact, and that doesn't involve a cellphone. It's something you can do for fun, it's something you can do live on, so while it takes away from school, I feel like this is something that's good for them. Uh student council, work with our junior high student council in Veterans Day assembly on Friday. They did a great job, the students did a great job presenting. Um our student council attended a leadership conference on October twenty-eighth, my still in your thunder, hoping that. Uh honor council, your honor council, so they did a great job, I'll let you go over that more. Um on the back end, yeah, we just had, I know fall is a great time, it's a lot of fun to start with these sports, we come with these sports. There's so many recognitions for athletics, I know we have a lot, marching band have very specific reasons. Choir doing very, very well, but um I just gave you guys a list of all of our our all-conference uh students. So if you guys see them in the community, congratulate them, highlight, uh our girl state cross-country team took fifth. They're projected to take eight, they took fifth, they did fantastic. Uh we had two boys that ran in that meet, they did well as well. We had three academic all-states so far, Lucy Davis, Renna Henderson and Brad Axon. We're all academic all-states, the first two across country, running volleyball. How I would say her person, sorry, Winnie Bear Custer, uh senior for us, qualified for the state swim meet. Uh from Indianola, so she's sort of in the two hundred and four meter media freestyle relay. Uh with the Indianola team this weekend in Marshes, so another thing. Uh and they're a football team, good season, we had our all-district players on there in volleyball conferences, so. I share that with you, not not for any other reason, then you can congratulate those kids.
Questions for Smith, for Mr. Smith?
Thanks, sir. Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. Minutes are presented from the October meeting, anybody have any corrections, changes? I saw none. Okay. Next up, paid bills and invoices.
Two invoices I did replace into plan thirty-three because they met the threshold, one is for some Iowa mechanical, that's still part of us junior, junior high. Uh the second one is electronic engineering equipment, we upgraded the stage lighting, I know that. Um Mr. Bro's talked about that last time we were together. Uh other than that, I mean, I made a few notes right and left, but do you have any questions for me?
You hit the two that I highlighted.
Oh, there you go.
Um Harland A A, the three thousand for supplies, is that just printing, okay, I just. Kinda wanna keep an eye on some of those things this year, so.
We're still kind of watching that, so we got a update report on media and we spent about forty-three percent. We're gonna just kinda see how that shapes out and what type of charges we do get. Once that allocation that they were able to keep has been spent.
Okay.
I'll keep you posted.
Perfect.
On the Motorola solutions for twenty-seven.
That's part of our safety grant that we got through the state, it's actually federal dollars and those are the eight radios for that.
That's one of them right there, right?
Well, it didn't pay to be admin. So yes, it looks just like that.
If you like this one, you'll really like that.
Paid for admin except for district office, it didn't.
Yeah, the questions on paid bills and invoices? Personnel reports, is there, just anything?
No, just some coming and going with coaches, uh any questions for me, have to entertain, but that's.
We have some, evidently some good junior high involvement, we got lots of uh coaches due to numbers.
Yes, yeah, and that's been the the case since I've been here, seems like we've added a coach at junior high because of numbers kinda consistently. They did add junior girls this year, our conference did, so that's why we have the junior girls coach. They will actually wrestle um after Christmas, so junior high boys are wrestling right now, girls are playing basketball. After Christmas, the boys will play basketball, girls will wrestle, so.
What kind of numbers do you see doing both?
Oh, boy, I don't, I don't know that, right, or a top ahead ten, I mean, we have junior high are gonna do both, you know?
I don't even exactly remember, but do we have several that are doing, yeah, I'd say both, that's good, I can experience both those.
Yeah, so, you know, just to caveat on that, the state girls wrestling is is one of the fastest-growing sports and not just Iowa. Uh numbers continue to grow, state of Iowa is one of two classes at the state meet this year, there'll be a one A and a two A. Uh to break up the big and small because of just number of programs that are being added. Any other questions on personnel?
Open enrollment, Kami has provided the worksheet there and we are uh going to. Uh approve two, correct Kami, is that what you?
Coming into the district that's based on good causes, there were two out of the district, but we're tabling those, they're not our resident students. They're Orient Maxburg students, but they're thinking that with the dissolution, they will become.
Our students.
They wanted to just be preemptive, and it's like, no, we can't act on a student that's not ours yet, so we just table those.
Okay. Financial report.
I don't know what to say, we say the same things every month. We are plugging along, if you look at the revenues and expenditures, I think it's very important for you to always compare to the prior three years average. Cuz as you can see, our revenues and expenses do not, they are not linear, they're just not gonna move that way. So this shows you that we're right on track with the revenues and expenditures. As far as the statement of position, it's still a little early in the year to kind of see if there's anything that's. Uh to keep an eye on or to dig into a little bit deeper, but. We're plugging along, our our fund balance, we know, is very healthy, we do know that we will dip into it slightly this year in the general fund. Um remember that in nutrition, we only look at the receivable, which is the negative accounts. And the deferred revenue, which are the positive accounts, we really only update the balance sheet once a year. But I am keeping an eye on those accounts and we're still in fine condition there. We only have a handful that are over our ten dollar uh board policy and I'm working with those families. Questions for me?
Tara watches ours on a daily basis, don't worry. Contracts and agreement, I'm sorry, any other question on the financial report? Uh contracts and agreement, school-based therapist provider, light gets in. As presented.
Yeah, Kendra.
Just another new one.
Therapist in town that reached out and asked if we had a need for in school. Um face-to-face therapy, we do, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, sure, he had some clients in town and so has seen a couple of her students in school that, you know, here to get them out during the day.
TPR eight. Number four, minimum four, Kami, is that you?
Yeah, they're just taking back, they've, they've reallocated now that they've shut down all the apprentices, you can't put any new ones in. Now they can truly calculate how much does that cost for you to finish? And so then they've taken any extra money and they pulled it back, so this is just saying that we're taking some of your money. But we've, we have already sent that back in.
Was that it? Or that's it? Any other questions, concerns, discussion for consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Malcolm, is there a second? Second by Gina, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, old business, one item, second reading and adoption of the board policy is updated based on IASB recommendation for those three that were there, we discussed those last month, use motor vehicles, basic instruction program and purpose of non-instructional and business services.
Just back for a second reading?
Any questions on those from last month? I would entertain a motion to approve them on second reading. Motion by Emily, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gina, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, new business. Set date and authorize publication of public hearing for fiscal year twenty-six calendars.
Yeah, we're playing right along, we've met twice, kind of have what is near final version of the calendar, they're getting some last minute feedback, we'll finalize next week and should have a public hearing for it at the December board meeting. Should be ready to go.
So we need to act on that, correct?
Yeah.
To publish that it'll be on the December meeting. And drive a motion to set the public hearing for fiscal year twenty-six calendars as the December ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Motion by Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gina, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, next up, first reading of updated board policy six oh five point oh eight, artificial intelligence and educational environment and supporting regulation.
Yeah, so the first, we'll start with the six oh five point oh eight, this was a place we brought last year, they went through and then adopted after the year kind of ended and with some of the learning that Chad and the team, they want to add the changes which are highlighted for you. But when it comes regards to data privacy, security, that it includes social security numbers, students' use of AI. Again, I just, this is based on their experience and how we're vetting those resources, so those are just some changes I'd like to see added.
So the yellow is added?
Yep. And then the other was, if you remember, we talked about deep fakes, AI-generated images and getting something in there. So this is the post together, Siobhan doesn't have one, ISP currently doesn't have one on this. We did send this to our attorney and this is what she kind of sent back to us with all the changes that she recommended. So this will be a regulation that supports the AI policy that you're approving that allows us to, to, well, not only communicate to students about not creating them, but then what happens if they do? Unfortunately, some schools in Iowa already experienced this last year. So trying to get this in place. Well, not only to communicate to kids, like I said, then what we'll do if they, if they do choose to generate the images and distribute them. So those are what those are.
Any questions for Justin on those? Any concerns, thoughts?
Chad will be here, he asked to give the board an update on AI in December, so we'll put that as barber. So he can, if you have questions about the policy then or anything, he'll be here to kind of talk about the task force as well, so.
Okay, now that I entertain a motion to approve first reading of updated all six oh five point oh eight and its supporting regulation.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Motion by Gina, second by Malcolm, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving around along to board member reports. What do you got for us? I mean, he already stole your thunder, we heard, but.
So student council is kind of entering, it's like second busy season behind homecoming, just with all like the winter drives and everything. So last month, twenty-five student council members attended the Iowa State Leadership Conference. And that was at Iowa State, so it's kind of, but during this conference, members were able to visit with other schools, like plan and see what they do for their student council. And so we kind of got new ideas from that, and then we also listened to key speakers, I just talked about leadership in general and what we can do to improve and that. And then we also, last week, we took thirty-five student council members to volunteer at Meals from the Heartland, so it was a good little volunteer opportunity and they did that for two hours. But we're still planning, planning to do that again coming, I think it's in like January. So it's probably going to look the same, like thirty to forty student council members going. And then recently, we started working on our late fall slash winter activities. And this includes like our winter warmth drive, adopt a family, Veterans Day assembly, which we completed last week and then decorating the nursing home, nursing home. And for the Veterans Day assembly, which was on Friday, we had students in charge of running that assembly, which I thought went pretty well. And then we also made them, made the veterans, which were locals. We made them gift bags, all of the items in the gift bags really donated from students and other members. And then for adopt a family, we've had members sign up to be assigned to one of the six kids, like to fulfill one of their wishes, I guess, and like these wishes can range from like Legos to like clothing items, like art supplies. Basically just anything that they want for Christmas, I guess. And then we are also beginning to work and promote the winter warmth drive, which we will be hosting throughout November and December. And then we're just basically trying to put up flyers that say any students welcome to donate winter clothing such as coats, gloves or hats. That's basically it.
Perfect, thank you, excellent. Emily? Thank you, Justin, for all of the cell phone data breakouts, that was very helpful. I've been cruising through those and looking at comments, I think that gives us some great information to, to look at as we're moving forward with that. And distilling that down to some usable conclusions out of each section was really, really nice. Part of that I want to add to is that convention and IASB next week, I think there's a cell phone topic, AI topic, we've got several of those built into the sessions as well. So it'll be nice to get some more information on that, so I'll see most of you there.
I'm nothing.
Gina?
I'm good.
Tim, good? All right, Justin, you're up.
Also being stapled backwards, I'd fall apart tonight apparently. During the, the copier backwards, I've called days, but ISP convention, as Jared mentioned, kind of put down who we have registered in the plan. I have a suburb of both days, welcome to ride with us, we'll leave from the admin building, I'll put an email out next week on departure times, I assume you're going to be staying down there. That's what I thought, so. And then McKenzie on Thursday, I'll let you know, and then Cory and Kendra will plan on picking you up when that's over in the room, so we'll, glad you're going. Cell phone discussion update, as Jared mentioned, a lot of good data, it took a while to separate it out by building and, and give that to you, but I think it's, as Jared mentioned, a lot of good information. Just to keep you up to date on the timeline, we'll meet this Thursday as an admin team, kind of go through it and start, like, what do we think policies and procedures should be or could be? Take that to staff on one of those two days in November to get their feedback. And then I'll provide that with you going into that board meeting in, in December. And we can have a conversation about what we think the policies and procedures should be at that time, any changes will be made then. Again, two readings, so we have a reading then and then in January is kind of the timeline, so right on track with where we need to be with that information. Flight school, I've kept you in the loop on what we're trying to do here. Update as of now, when DMAC backed out, we could run it through Indian Hills. It'll qualify for current enrollment, but most of those classes would be online. And then our kids would need to go down there at least probably once a term to do the hands-on competencies. If we worked with the flight school out at the airport, they'd be right here. That's going to have to look a little different based on our conversation with the DE. It'd be like work-based learning credit. Right now, they're not recognized as an industry credential that's supported by the state. There is an avenue to do that, and then you can use grant dollars, so concurrent role, we get money back for, we wouldn't for that and we'd have to, to pay for that training, so we're having a meeting with Sarah Overton set up on Thursday to better understand that, and then we'll contact the DE and try to figure out how we can get this approved and maybe qualify for some grant, makes no sense to me why we can't use somebody right here to provide that opportunity, so we're working on that, hopefully we'll get that in place before course guides come to you in January already. Crazy. Screen Sunday night, we're again planning that next Wednesday, the twentieth, sixty. Sixty, they can run the flyer. But basically it's a night for parents to kind of engage in discussion around online screen time, social media, chance to talk with other parents around what would be some, maybe some guidelines that we put in place at home when it comes to screen time, share some of the the data that you've, that was shared around the impact of screen time, so hopefully we have a good turnout. Over half of people who filled out the survey said they would be interested. I don't know if that'll work in their schedule, if they show up, but we'll, we'll plan accordingly.
Is that at the high school?
Yes, yeah. We had interest in asking Representative Sorenson, Sorenson and Senator Sinclair to the December board meeting, is there any interest in that? We did it before.
I say always.
Sorenson showed up, Sinclair wasn't able to make it, I'll reach out. That will be a little probably longer meeting, it's our annual board meeting where we do president, all that fun stuff. Close out the audit, but I will reach out and see if they can make it and we'll put them towards the front. Hopefully better understand what they're thinking in order to the session, so I'm getting head nods while, yes, I'll reach out and see if I can get them here. Had a question about whole grade sharing in Iowa, what is it actually? Never been a district that's actually done that, I had to go back and look, but I gave you a flow chart that I think kind of lays it out.
It's a very unique flow chart.
That one, yeah. I'll watch through the different sharing opportunities and then if you go on the right, you know, the whole. Yeah. It wouldn't print on, I'd just get it smaller for one sheet, it's on the DE's website, but kind of walks through what happens in whole grade sharing. I've had some of our parents whose students open a role who live there asking questions, apparently there's a vote or a joint meeting on Wednesday between OM and not a way valley around this topic, so it kind of lays out what whole grade sharing is. Question that I've been, have gotten is, does this allow them to then consolidate? I think it does. By missing the timeline for dissolution and having to go one more year, they actually could pivot and, and look at consolidation versus dissolution. So just prior to that to you, there was a question, I do apologize about the size, but I had to shrink it to get on one page. And then staffing plans, starting to work on staffing plans for you and pulling that together. The goal is to get that to you in December. Again, as Kami's mentioned, we're in, in pretty good financial shape. But as people leave with our decreasing enrollment, it's just, I have to look at every position, does it make sense to to make some changes and hire those back, so try and walk through that for you. And then one thing I failed to add on there, but I think you're aware is the architect visits around the strategic master plan, we have one more this week. Maybe turn everything in by the end of November and then Chad's looking for a date to try and have an interview of them in December. We could have up to two board members if you wanted to sit on that interview committee to, to select who you'd want to go with or at least interview them. Let me know if you're interested, we'll try and include those on dates, but you have to sit on the actual interview before it came to the board. My thought right now would be Gray and myself, potentially two board members. Nick and or Cam, because some of it looks like it's going to happen at the high school, so that's kind of where that's at, I'll let you know when we get a date set and we'll plan accordingly, so. That's all I've got, questions for me?
No, sir, any questions? All right, before we go into closed session, just a reminder, the next board meeting with a lot to do is December ninth and it'll be back out at the admin office.
Thanks for coming out here, hopefully it was worth it, thank the burglar whiteboards. Yeah, you'll see that's across the district and I think it's, I like the approach, I like the discussion kids are having, and so thanks for coming out and checking it out.
Before we go into closed session, can we take a three-minute break?
Yeah.